Mr. McDarnin, who do we have next?
Next person to testify is Lisa Dealey, Office of the City Commissioners.
Commissioner Dealey, are you there?
Good afternoon, yes, I am here.
Thank you for your patience. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of City Council in Philadelphia. I'm Commissioner Lisa Dealey, Chairwoman of the City Commissioners. Joining me today are Commissioner Seth Bluestein and Commissioner Omar Sabir, Deputy Commissioners Nick Custodio, Eric Kappenstein, and Devin Upta, and Budget Officer Brian Miracle. I'm pleased to provide testimony on the Office of the City Commissioners fiscal year 2023 operating budget. We are here to request $27,113,786 to fund our operations for fiscal year 2023. This request includes $13,106,768 in Class 100 for employee compensation, $10,398,301 in Class 200 for professional service contracts, election board payroll, and polling place rentals, $2,623,872 in Class 300 for materials and office supplies, and $984,845 in Class 400 for computers, furniture, and equipment. This request better reflects our actual costs. The budget proposed by the administration underfunds our department by $4,287,864. Specifically, we would be underfunded by $2,215,164 in Class 100, so we will have to come back for a mid-year transfer to make payroll, $1,113,200 in Class 200, so we will have to come back for a mid-year transfer to pay the election board workers and to mail the ballots, $84,500 in Class 300, so we will have to come back for a mid-year transfer to print materials for the 2023 primary, and $875,000 in Class 400, which is money specifically for implementing electronic poll books and improving how materials get to the polling places. While this council has always come through with mid-year transfer requests, we cannot keep operating in this manner as it causes delays and impacts our ability to plan for elections. Because we were unable to prepare over the last year like I had wished, our summer and our staff's summer is going to be totally gone. We are going to have to be working around the clock to get things ready for 2022. This is really not fair to us and them. It is just impossible, it's almost impossible, to retain staff under these circumstances. This fiscal year is one of our most important as it will contain two of the biggest turnout elections, the midterm general election and the Philadelphia mayor and council primary election. The last midterm, we had a turnout of 53.1%, or 565,124 votes. This level of participation is staggering when you consider that in 2018, there was no US Senate election in Pennsylvania. This year, we have an open governor's race and an open US Senate race with nothing less than the control of the United States Senate on the line. We have seen a new no-excuse mail-in ballot option increase turnout in the last three elections. Though it is possible that we will see close to presidential-level participation this November. Next year, we have an open marriage race, which piques public interest and leads the higher turnout. We will likely see over 300,000 voters cast their ballots next spring. But in both elections, whether one person votes or a half a million, the costs are about the same. The difference could be, especially when you're all on the ballot, do you want results in days or in weeks? Last year, I came before you and I said that 2022 midterm election will return the eyes of the world to Philadelphia, and now we would like to be prepared. I listed all the things we plan to do to make sure that we can focus on running the election and exploring ways to expand services. But my budget request was not met. We've had to return again and again for mid-year transfers, and all that time should have been used getting Philadelphia ready for 2022, and was instead spent fighting for funding. I just cannot go on like this. I recognize that many of you are supportive of additional funding, and it is the administration who is our biggest obstacle, but I say it all the time. After 2020, we went from heroes to zeros, and our budget struggles reflect this. There is no better example of the issues that we face than our warehouse. It is still not ready. It is not as secure as it needs to be. We recently had a meeting with the administration staff and the consultants they brought in, and we went through warehouse budget cut scenarios. Their consultant fees were not on the chopping block, but the bullproof glass to protect my staff was, though I ended up moving some bigger ticket items to the latter, underfunded phase, in order to keep them from cutting staff safety. But these bigger ticket items are nonetheless critically important. I am not sure if you recall the serious security breach that we had at the transitional warehouse in 2020. A homeless individual entered from the woods, gained access to our space through another tenant's space, and stole one of our vendors' laptops and USBs used to program the ballot marking devices. As a nation, we are fortunate that these items were unable to affect security of the election. There was no video surveillance because funding was not made available, and the cameras were cut despite my request. It was worldwide news. Definitely ended up spending nearly the amount that surveillance cameras would have cost on a couple of months of security guards. Yet another example of efforts to save a nickel that end up costing us time, embarrassment, and quarters. We ask that when the Department of Public Property budget comes up, that funds be added so that we can finish the warehouse right and that it actually be secured. I think the main disconnect when speaking with the budget staff is that we are not like most departments. What our department does is run elections, and we have set deadlines. Machines have to be shipped this day, ballots have to be backed this day, people must vote on May 17. If they don't, our democracy crumbles, and it will be us the commissioners faces on the front page. Yet the cost of elections and the adequate funding of our department is out of our hands. We are not like streets where if you give them more money, they'll pick up trash faster, give them less money, and it'll take longer. Or OIT, where if you give them less money, Philadelphia will just keep using the same software we have for 30 years, or we will have to suffer with out-of-date computers and cell phones. Give them more money, and technology will work better. For elections, which area of the city do you not want us to mail ballots to? Which area of the city should we not stay up on Election Day? Which polling places should we send machines to and which should we not? Elections cost what they cost, and these costs have gone up. We have been saying this for years. The only real flexibility would be in the length of time it takes to count the mail ballots. We invest plenty in temporary staffing to get them scanned and processed quickly, much quicker than the 15 days that the election law permits us to finish the counting. But we count them quickly and accurately because we recognize that voters want finality to the election, and the longer that takes, the more conspiracy theories develop. Our budget request does not include an expansion of drop boxes and the return of satellite offices. We are still working on a budget for those. I'm embarrassed to have to say that that has been something we've been working on for so long. But this requires working with more than just my department, and as I said, we've spent much of last year fighting to fund our regular operations. It also does not include any frills. We are not trying to buy the Lisa Dealey Vote Mobile, the Omar Sabir banner plane, or the Seth Bluestein glided statue. The only thing I would call discretionary is a $750,000 request for communications around the status of mail ballots for the November election. This figure was the same amount that we spent in the fall of 2020 on advertising the Act 77 and Act 12 changes. This came about as a result of the Commonwealth Court ruling, Act 77 unconstitutional, and the Supreme Court taking up the case. The court will likely rule before the November election, and we need to be prepared to let voters know that either mail ballots are still legal or they are not. Already, in a much lower-profile primary election, we've gotten several calls a day from voters asking if they are still able to vote by mail. I guarantee you that when we get into September gearing up for a general election with international importance and the misinformation about mail-in ballots starts to circulate, we will be getting calls from many members of council asking us, "What are we doing about it?" I'm telling you right now, our ability to combat that misinformation depends on what funding we have in our budget to do so. I'm happy to report that after a frustrating delay this past year, we did get our ballot production equipment installed. This equipment was funded with the CTCL grant that we received in 2020. Now, all the ballots are produced and mailed in-house, as opposed to being contracted out. This equipment that was purchased without using Philadelphia taxpayer funds is saving our taxpayers $1 million a year and more in years with a higher demand for mail ballots, such as the upcoming fiscal year. Most counties are seeing the opposite. They are grappling with new mailhouse contracts. Additionally, this equipment will allow us to get the ballots out into the hands of voters quicker, have greater quality control, and update their ballot status faster. As you know, we have been trying to replace our paper poll books with electronic poll books for several years. These electronic poll books were supposed to be implemented in the 2019 general with the new voting system. But the equipment did not pass the pilot election phase of the testing, and the purchase was canceled. Electronic poll books will allow for faster and more efficient voter check-in at polling places and for voters to look up their current polling place if they're at the wrong location. It will also shave several days off of the counting of mail ballots as it will more quickly allow the staff to cross-reference the ballots that arrived closer to Election Day to ensure that those voters did not vote in person, a key step we take to ensure accurate election results. The issuing of a new RFP was delayed when the funds were cut from last year's request and not returned until the mid-year transfer this past winter. The RFP was then issued, and responses are currently with the selection committee. We hope to implement them this fall. To prepare, we are planning on doing an extra round of training for poll workers. Since the new voting system mandated 2018, elections have gotten more technical and complicated. During that time, we have received numerous recommendations from various city departments and outside consultants hired by the administration. I have spoken about these needs in previous years and our desire to implement the recommendations. But as the theme of this testimony continues, we did not get the funding that we asked for last year. In fact, we were budgeted so little for Class 100 in fiscal year 22 that we did not have enough to pay for existing staff through the fiscal year, and were unable to fill vacancies in the department, let alone continue the increase of data entry staff that was delayed because of the pandemic. We were also made to suffer from yet another review of our department by the administration, and their proposal again underfunds our Class 100 by $2.2 million. I would like to thank City Council, who has been able to break the deadlock with the mid-year transfer that allowed us to restart hiring. We hope to be staffed up and ready to take on the increase of registrations and mail ballot applications that we will likely see leading up to the November election. In addition to getting our data entry clerk's capacity up to where it needs to be, we will be adding an IT unit, additional middle management to provide greater oversight and project management, communication staff to help expand our message and push back against the misinformation, expanding the vote-by-mail and election board units, and creating a public engagement and language access unit. As you saw with our operations at the convention center in 2020, counting of the mail ballots is timely, and it takes an arming of temporary staff, both from other city departments and temporary hires. We require this additional temporary staff because we cannot start counting the mail ballots until Election Day, when our permanent staff is running the in-person election. For the 2022 general election, we expect enough mail ballots that we will need to return to a 24-hour counting operation. If our expectations hold true, this means we will need to spend about $400,000 on temporary hires for that election. For the 2023 primary, we do not expect to have to go 24 hours and should be able to do it for $200,000 in temporary hire. On top of that, we estimate that we will need $500,000 to reimburse other city departments for overtime that their staff will incur while working for us. This is critically important because we need these city staff members to lock drop boxes at 8:00 PM on election night. If we do not have city employees to do this, we do not have drop boxes. With the cuts to our Class 100 and 200, this surge staffing is not funded. Since the passage of Act 77 and Act 12, postage has been a growing expense. We now expect to pay about $1 million a year in postage alone. Part of this is due to our desire to continue to pay for the return postage of ballots. Providing return postage makes it easier for voters to return their ballots since they do not have to buy a stamp. Our budget request includes the original postage costs, including continuing to pay for the return postage of the ballots. But if you look in your budget binder, the budget office specifically went in and removed the postage increase. I'm sure you have the same question that I have. How are we supposed to get the ballots to the voters if not through the postal service? We have continued to prioritize the values of diversity and inclusion and making sure the demographics of our department reflect the citizens we serve. As of December 2021, our demographics were 57 white, 66 minority, 59 females. The demographics of our recent hires are five African-American and four white. Language access continues to be a prime focus, and implementing Chinese as our new Section 203 language is one of our main focuses right now. Our language access coordinator, Michelle Montalvo, does a fantastic job. Our request will also supplement this with two language access and engagement specialists, one who speaks Spanish and one who speaks Chinese. Currently, our staff contains five staffers who speak Spanish, two who speak Malayam, one who speaks Italian, one who speaks Bengali, and one who speaks Urdu, Punjabi, and Hindu. We also have a staffer on loan from the managing director's office who speaks Chinese, who is helping with the 203 implementation. Staff and poll workers can use the language line to assist with translation. We also had 184 divisions covered by a bilingual interpreter this past November, but we are always looking to do better and will continue to work to recruit more interpreters. The Department of Justice enforces the Section 203 requirements, and they specifically mentioned advertising in minority language publications as a component of a successful bilingual language program. We requested an additional $290,000 in additional funds from the procurement department so that we may advertise at the same level in Chinese publications as we do in Spanish. In my last conversation with the budget office, it appeared that those funds were not allocated as requested. We also requested $84,500 for additional printing of signage in Chinese, and it appears that this is the $84,500 gap in our Class 300 request. One of the biggest outward-facing aspects of our department is our website. It is over 10 years old and optimized for mobile, and not optimized for mobile devices. A .com instead of a .gov, and several of the features have not been available for several years because the programs that were built on are no longer supported and therefore a security concern. In the coming weeks, we will be launching votes.philly.gov, the new online home of the Philadelphia City Commissioners. It will be new, modern, mobile-friendly, and will be part of the philadelphegov family, so the security will be monitored and maintained by OIT. The missing features will be restored, and it will be joined soon after by a companion progressive mobile app. The project was funded from our state election security grant. Also exciting for those of you who have been involved in Philadelphia elections for as long as I have, we are bringing back 686Vote. 686Vote used to be the go-to number for all election matters until the late 80s. This is something that I personally spearheaded after discovering that the number has been unassigned for over 30 years. It will once again be the one number you can call for all matters relating to Philadelphia elections. Wrapping up, I would just like to take a moment before I finish to thank our dedicated staff who continue to perform Herculean feats despite the difficulties presented to them, oftentimes doing the work of two or three people. We appreciate this opportunity to present our testimony and are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Madam Commissioner, and your colleagues, Fred Voight would be proud right now. You've come a long way as a department from the days of Jamestown machines, Shoop machines. Only people of a certain age, Omar Sabir, would know what those are, but I do. And you guys have had to build an operation without a manual during the height of Democratic-Republican controversy in a nonpartisan man. Former Commissioner Schmidt as well, kudos to him. But I recall not too long ago, the hero portion of your description, when I watched on national TV with bated breath as you were being circled by individuals with firearms that were trying to disrupt your account. I recall the Herculean effort in parts of Philadelphia. Many of those sections always under-resourced. But during this pivotal presidential election, you guys stepped up to the plate in ways while you built them, the mail-in ballot mechanism, drop box mechanism, without a manual. I recall that, saw it up close and personal. I remember at the end of the day, waiting for your count, and I can't remember the other state, and had you not had what you needed. If in any way the number 45 could have cried foul for defalation and stolen the election through misinformation, where would our budget be right now? Where would, what would we be cutting back on right now? I know you're not partisan, but I'm partisan. And I'm thankful that you guys, in that nonpartisan way, were there to be the example of impartiality, fairness, and the democratic process. So having said all of that, how are you keeping up with Class 100 machinists, people inside the polling booths, to be able to train and pay them on Election Day? Is that, what was our last election's vacancy ratio within that capacity?
Off the top of my head, Councilman, I think we were about 70% filled. And we are always working to do all that we can to get filled to 100%. We are, you know, we work with the schools, with community organizations, and we do as much outreach as possible. The poll worker pay comes out of our Class 2 hire budget. So that's one of the things that we are concerned about.
What is the rate of pay?
So our poll workers, at the present time, they make $115 or $120 if there's a judge of elections, with the opportunity to make an additional $30 if they go to training.
And how many hours do they work?
They, the polls are open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but we know that they need to be there from 7:00 AM, and sometimes they could be there as late as 9:00, 9:30 at night.
And so what is that breakdown in hourly rate?
It's, I can do the math.
Somebody can slip you a note.
Yeah.
Omar was good in math. He went to Sister Clara Mohammed. He was great in that. So...
For $120, 13 hours, it's a little more than 9:20 an hour.
So for 9:20 an hour, our democracy is at risk to what Walmart is paying now?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Second part of the question. As we move from the baby boomers to Gen Z, they receive their information differently. How are you adjusting your messaging, nonpartisan voter education, to meet that new demographics needs? And I know you just told me the $4 million in the red, but is there a strategy by which we are trying to reach that population?
We are doing a few things. So I mentioned we're updating our website, and soon afterwards, we're going to have a mobile app. And we are looking to get a new digital director as part of our communications expansion. And really, we'd like to, you know, we look forward, as all of you do, to being able to continue to go out into the communities and engage the public in person.
Where are we?
Each of us, and each of us commissioners also have a pretty robust social media presence.
Segue, where do you project us to be in this election and next year with you guys having to sit on the sidelines because it's a conflict of interests, and judges will take your seats? Where are we on drop boxes and mail-in ballots? And where are we at to deal with that projected increase in participation?
So right now, you know, we're looking to be able to get the funding in our, that we originally asked for, so that we can have the funds that we need to operate with just our basic level of services. But, you know, you and I, and I know we've outlined a plan to City Council to expand those services, to include additional drop boxes, so that the drop boxes could be equitably distributed throughout the city and to once again give voters the opportunity to vote in a satellite office. We know that those satellite offices were very popular. People waited in line happily for hours at satellite offices just to be able to have the opportunity to vote by mail in person. Neither one of those satellite offices or drop boxes are not part of this budget request basically because we were just trying to get our operating budget agreed to. And we're still working on a price tag for what it's going to cost to expand the drop boxes in a more equitable fashion. And that is, we're working with Comcast right now to see about what, you know, what that camera network will look like and what the cost would be. And then, you know, we have to add into that the staffing and logistics of all that. And the satellite offices, you know, Commissioner Greenwall was here before me, and we are really happy with the work that we do with the procurement department. They've been great partners with us in spite of all of this frustration. The people at procurement at Public Property are fabulous to work with, and they are helping us right now work out some kind of cost projections for what it would be to lease a potential satellite office location.
I'm going to turn over the mic to Majority Leader Parker, but I want to thank you for your outreach when you guys go out with those mock machines. And I watch in my senior buildings, you know, the seniors tentatively go up to those machines, look at them like caveman looking at fire, and then you guys then make them comfortable with using technology, watching the ballot print out. I cannot imagine not having that as a part of the outreach effort because if your worst fears are met one Election Day, you get analysis paralysis. And I'm glad that we spend the time and the money to do that outreach to our seniors in particular. Chair recognizes Majority Leader Parker.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Talking about Jamestown machines and Fred Voight, and I'm mad that when you were talking, I was shaking my head. My camera wasn't on, but I was like, what does that mean? You know, we in the Jacksonian age, right, of how we do all of this. But I'm like, I remember the Flintstone age that Councilmember Chairman Jones is talking about. So special thank you to you, Chairman Dealey, and Commissioners Sabir and Bluestein for your work. Want to, again, just start with saying a special thanks to all of your teams, but Devin Upta in particular, and Nathan Jones, Devin from Commissioner Sabir's office, and Nathan with you, Commissioner Dealey. We rely on them a great deal when we are planning events throughout the district, and they have always been responsive. I also want to thank you all for what I don't know how many people see from a collective, but all of the community-based events that you do partnering. You know, when people see these flyers and then they see your respective logos, all of that work is extremely important, and it goes on year-round. So I want to say a special thank you to each of you, especially when you come in our schools to work with our high school students. That's extremely important. Let me go back to where Chairman Jones stopped. Um, because he, he was on with what my first question is relative to these drop boxes. And, uh, I heard your, uh, response. But, um, when you talk about our progress on having a sufficient uh, number of drop boxes in place for mail-in ballots for future e- elections, tell me if you will, very specifically, um, and we, I know about the, the court case, the litigation, and, and we're waiting, waiting on a response, how many do we have in the city of Philadelphia?
Seventeen.
We, we have seventeen and, and Chairwoman, and, and you know, when you talk about, um, an equitable distribution of drop boxes across the city, you would say if you and all of the commissioners are together, we now plan to have seventeen, um, but all things being equal and perfect, the city of Philadelphia, we project should be at, if we had an equitable distribution, how many?
Seventy-three.
Seventeen current and seventy-three is the magic number. Have you, have you quantified, Commissioner, Chairwoman? Have you, have you quantified, um, the, the total cost to get to that, um, that seventy-three number? Do we know how much? Like, so, so Sherrell, we're at seventeen and an equitable distribution of drop boxes in the city of Philadelphia, we would be at seventy-three and that costs X amount. Do, do we have a dollar amount?
We do not. We are still working, uh, to try and figure out what that camera network is gonna look like. We had originally, uh, been working towards using existing, existing networking, tying in with other cameras that are, uh, already available in the city. And we, uh, continue to hit a brick wall. So we are now, uh, trying another avenue with Comcast. And we hope to have, uh, I think we might have, uh, I think we might be successful, uh, in this, on this, on this road. Um, and we should have a cost, uh, in a couple of weeks. Uh, when I, just to give you an idea, the seventy-three, you know, we, what we would like to do is we would like to put it at one per ward, you know, um, and then put, you know, the one we have at City Hall and we have at Delaware and Spring Garden. And we have, uh, one at the warehouse. And, uh, we like to, we need to put two up in the, uh, Manion, Roxboro area just because it's such a wide, uh, geographically large spread of voters.
So Commissioner, uh, Chairwoman, um, uh, and I get that you're working on the camera network. But if there was any way, um, that you could forward to Chairperson Jones sort of a quantifiable dollar amount, even if you were talking about the cost for the cameras and, and what it will cost to get to that seventy-three number, um, you know, it, you know, it, it makes good economic sense and is worth the investment of taxpayer dollars. And being able to have one in each ward, um, you know, it, it matters because, you know, it has changed the way. And, you know, I called it when it was passed, I love the idea of the vote by mail. But having, um, only served for ten years in Harrisburg, long enough to find my way, uh, to the bathroom when these kind of things are passed, we would call them an unfunded mandate if it didn't come with the dollars needed to give to our respective counties to implement, um, such a law, particularly when, you know, just like a business, like the first five years when a new initiative, uh, was, uh, being, uh, rolled out. So I would be interested in seeing, uh, what that, what that number is. Um, in addition to that, I want to go on the record to say, usually, you know, when people come on to different commissioners of different departments, we're asking them for the summary. And it was very important for you to go through every single word. I mean, I was watching Chairperson Jones as he was listening to you run through the details. It was very important to get each and every word that you got on the record, on the record, so that when the public comes and they, I, I have a dual capacity, I happen to be one of those ward leaders. So when you talk about the pay and, and Chairman Jones sort of walked through, now wait a minute now, he did do that back of the, the napkin math, how much are they getting paid per hour? All of that is on the record now because those are questions that they, they ask of us and, and they expect to, to get an answer. So this idea of having to go through a mid-year transfer, you know, paying the workers, um, the, the vote by mail, printing of the ballots, the electronic, uh, poll books, we should not be functioning um, uh, uh, that way. And I wanted to add my sentiments for that issue on the record. Uh, the final thing that I do want you to address for me, if you can, because I want to just really understand and the public should know what we're referencing, um, that is the security threats. Um, either a, a, around the, uh, uh, election, I don't care if we're talking about those cameras. You gave us that very specific example when, uh, the northeast location, a warehouse was broken in through, entering another tenant's, you know, um, entrance. Tell us when you talk about security threats, walk through what they, what they are and then tell us what's being done to, to address them.
So, you know, there are, there are security threats that are, um, that come to us through a variety of ways, right? So we get a lot of threats to our, uh, to our, uh, to our persons. Like we are, we're still, uh, getting threats. Um, and we still have to worry about keeping our, uh, staff safe. So we don't want to be in a position where our warehouse can be, uh, you know, broken into or our staff is unsafe walking to their car. Or we as commissioners and the public at a, at a public meeting would some, would be unsafe. Possibly somebody could come into a public meeting, um, looking to do harm. Or an observer, uh, that comes in to watch us count the mail-in ballots, uh, would come in and possibly want to do us harm. So that means like bulletproof glass, a, a, a magnetometer, a perimeter fence around the building, more lighting outside, uh, the doors to be, uh, properly, uh, with the proper locks on them for only, uh,
I, I, I heard the bell and I, I want to honor our time, Chairwoman. I would, I would ask if you could to very specifically, if you would be able to document from a, a safety and security perspective, um, because we also have been talking about this issue of cyber, um, security. Chairman Jones, that's something that you've been consistently talking about as well. If you could provide that to the chairman, um, for distribution to members, um, of, of council, that would be, uh, extremely valuable information for us to have. And, and just like we just said, um, for the issue of our stages, um, and the staffing for all of our public, uh, events that, you know, we need to have a clear line as to who's paying for what, who's responsible for what, uh, much like we, uh, just did, um, when, when talking about that relative to public property in the MDO's office. Um, we need to make sure, uh, that we support you all in, in your efforts to, to do so here as it relates to elections, um, and the, and the commissioner's office. Uh, thank you so very much, Commissioner, to all of the commissioners and to you, uh, Chairperson, uh, Jones.
Thank you, Leader Parker, for those questions. Chair recognizes Member Gudie.
Thank you, um, Chair Jones. Um, Commissioner Dealey, good morning. Um, I want to, uh, first thank you, Commissioner Sabir, Commissioner Bluestein, um, former Commissioner Al Schmidt and your entire teams for the important work that, um, you have done and you continue to do during this unique time, um, in our democracy. Um, in terms of my questions, I wanted to follow up on the line of questioning from Majority Leader Parker, um, and Councilmember Jones about drop boxes. Um, first, uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention that of the seventeen drop boxes that we were able to, or, or that we were able to install, none of them, um, have been located in the third councilmatic district. Um, I think, and I think you would agree that this is an injustice. Um, earlier in your testimony, I heard you talk about the reasons why your budget did not include um, a proposal for additional drop boxes. Um, the first thing I heard you say is that, um, you were concerned that the administration was not funding your core budget. So you didn't want to, um, propose an expansion. And the second thing, um, was that there is no additional, um, no sustainable camera network to monitor the, the drop boxes. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I wanted to dig a little more deeply into the camera network issue. Can you talk more about how you've tried to work with the administration to identify existing cameras for drop boxes?
So we have been working, um, with the Department of Recreation, the Department of OIT, the Police Department. Uh, we even reached out to SEPTA. We have tried, um, to find cameras that would work for us in a way where because of the requirement, Councilwoman, we need to be able to retain the footage that, that, uh, is watching those drop boxes. So that is making it a little more difficult because a lot of the cameras that we have, uh, we can't retain that footage because of, uh, how, how those camera, what those cameras are used for. So, um, we're often, we hit a brick wall when it comes to retention. Um, the Department of Recreation has been our, our most successful avenue. Um, but even there, we have issues because most of the cameras in rec centers are, uh, directed towards, um, the playing fields or the basketball courts or places where, uh, people would congregate. So there aren't really a lot of camera angles that, uh, provide for, uh, places near the building. Uh, we do recognize, and, and we know you and I have talked about this before, that we do need to do something out there. And we, um, we just looked at, um, oh, okay, we just looked at a, a rec center out there where we're thinking about a box in the front. Um, and there, you're, we know it's, we know we need a box out there. But we are just having a really hard time finding a spot. None of the rec centers cameras are working for us. Uh, there was a SEPTA spot up there that we went and checked out and it didn't, it didn't work out. Um, so the libraries are, they don't have the cameras set up in a way that we can retain the footage. And so, uh, we're just, uh, it's really, I know it sounds, it sounds so unlikely that we can't find a camera network that will, uh, suffice in that particular area of the city. And we are as frustrated and as challenged by it as you are. But we are continuing and I, and I offered before, uh, you know, we'll, we're happy to go out with you and look with you, um, for cameras. But, um, many of the libraries don't even have cameras anymore. So I, we're really hitting a brick wall up there. So, um, hopefully, you know, we're doing everything we can to get one more box. So we can at least have a box, um, in your district.
When you say that you hit a brick wall when it comes to retention, can you explain that a little more, um, deeply?
So the, for example, the, the cameras that the police have up, they are used, um, to help fight crime and to keep people safe. And those, uh, that, that film, that footage is retained by them for court purposes or, or other, or other means. And we can't, we can't retain, we can't get our hands on it. And so then if you look at the school district, a lot of their camera work is paid for by Title I money that we can't, you can't pollute with other, with other, uh, agencies. So, I mean, it's just, it, it seems like an easy thing to find these cameras that we can use. But unfortunately, even the cameras outside of City Hall, we pay to get that, to get the, to retain that footage.
Okay, and I, oh, sorry.
So I, it is, it sounds, like I said, I get it. I mean, I know that this is something we need to fix and we're, we're gonna do everything we can, but we just can't find a spot.
I mean, because this is so important and I do hear all of the obstacles you're saying you're, you were facing. I did, I do want to understand this. I have asked after the last election, I asked for a detailed list of what sites you considered in the third district for a drop box and why they did not work. Um, I never received that, um, and I'm still interested in knowing that.
I'm sorry, I thought you asked to go on a tour with us and I, I didn't remember reaching out, but I'll make sure you get that.
No, we followed up in writing and asked, um, for a specific list of the sites that you looked at in the third district and why they didn't work. And we still want that because we want to understand, um, what needs to be done.
I will, I will get that to you. Absolutely.
Okay. And then lastly, um, can you describe for us the programs the commissioners will implement in FY twenty-three to promote equity in our city's voting systems? And how, you know, this team will ensure that every Philadelphian, regardless of race and economic background or where they live, has access to voting sites and election information?
We will, uh, continue to do outreach, you know, as we always have. And we, uh, we hope to hire, uh, diverse, uh, outreach and diversity, uh, personnel. Uh, you know, we're always working towards that. And I know Commissioner Sabir can speak on this issue as well as he's, um, he's got great relationships and partnerships throughout the city and he's doing a great job with outreach.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First I'd like to say hello to everyone.
Commissioner, can you, um, state your name for the record?
Sure, sure. I'm, uh, Commissioner Omar Sabir, uh, Vice Chair of, uh, the City Commissioners and a new father.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'd like to say, um, first I'd like to apologize for being dressed down. Again, I'm literally, uh, just leaving, uh, and out the hospital. Uh, my son had actually just been taken off of oxygen. So I just fed him, uh, his first bottle for me. And like now, I'm trying to get another chair for my wife so she can rock him and nurse him. So God willing, he should be home by next week. Um, and, uh, you know, and it's just, you know, one of these things that, um, I say all that to say, you know, the elections don't stop, right? No matter what. This is no, the pandemic, anything cannot, uh, stop elections. And when I first actually got hired, uh, by the citizens of Philadelphia, uh, the chair has said this job is not what you think it is. And every challenge, everything new, uh, that we go through, um, it just seemed like it just keep, uh, you know, whether it's the death threats, whether it's the funding, you know, whether it's whatever, right? You know, we always have to adapt and I'm glad, uh, that we have, uh, adapted to meet the challenge. Uh, yeah, so our outreach, uh, has been unprecedented, uh, from, uh, the City Commissioner's Office. Uh, and we target, uh, disadvantaged areas. Uh, we initiated, um, that's the bell? I gotta stop?
No, Commissioner, that, that's not for you.
Okay, okay. Uh, yes. Thank you. Uh, yes. So one of the initiatives, uh, that we started, uh, was the Actavis Cato Outreach Task Force. And that's a coalition of elected officials, uh, nonpartisan civic groups, business leaders, uh, the whole community, faith-based, uh, leaders. And we done, we have done, uh, an unprecedented amount. Uh, but again, as you know, uh, there's always more that needs to be done to combat the disinformation. And as you know, as we're talking to our constituents, um, we have to, uh, have more resources, uh, to reach that. And just for a quick example, uh, one of the things that the disinformation community is doing, uh, which is very challenging to overcome, that they're spending money and they're telling, uh, returning citizens that they can't vote. And as we know, that that may be true inside of some states, they're purchasing social media ads and they're, they're, they have targeted geo-fencing where it's actually targeting, uh, this community, telling them that they can't vote, which is true in some states. But again, in Pennsylvania, once you leave, uh, your confinement, can't, I mean, once you leave confinement, you can vote. And whether you've been convicted of a felony, you know, you can. And even while you're incarcerated, you actually can, uh, vote. And so one of the things that Chairwoman Dealey and I and Commissioner Bluestein is we actually been working with the prison commissioner to actually, uh, approve, you know, voting, uh, in, in jails. People that's haven't been convicted of a felony. So we get them to vote by mail, uh, applications, we mail them out the ballots, and that's just one instance. Uh, but it's a constant barrage and it's constant, uh, for us working. And just real quick, you know, I just came back from Salma, Alabama. We just commemorated the fifty-seventh year of Bloody Sunday. This is the first time that we did a commemoration without John Lewis, God rest his soul. And before I crossed the bridge, there was a woman that marched inside nineteen sixty-five, back on Bloody Sunday. And she grabbed my arm and said, young man, you're gonna have to get me across the bridge. And as we got midway through the bridge, uh, I became overwhelmed with emotion, uh, being in Alabama, you know, soaking up all of the history that took for us to be able to vote. vote. The older woman started dragging me and pulling me along, right? She started, she felt, she got a second wind, and she dragged me across the bridge. So, and, you know, understanding all of that, you know, just this information, it's not just a Philadelphia problem, it's a huge problem. And as we cross bridges to democracy, as we're doing now, we're going to need the resources. And again, you know, the money that she's, that we're asking for, that's, it still could be more than that. Other cities have, she talked about the daily bus, I mean, other cities have mobile buses, you know, where people can, can vote at. I mean, other cities have so much, you know, we've been around the country, ought to see this. So, we actually need more resources. And, you know, whatever our Chairwoman pretty much wants, we try to, definitely try to get it for us, I'm in full support of that. And in regards, and we had this conversation about the drop boxes, what I think, we can have, it may be a meeting with OIT, maybe a meeting with our direct department, you know, and maybe a Chairwoman, we all could really sit down and see exactly how we can, we can figure this out to get you a drop box. But again, it's challenging, there's a lot of things that arise, but I think more communication needs to be done. If the Chairwoman Dealey is with, is approval of that, I definitely think that we can do that to see, can we, see if we can get you a drop box for this election.
Mr. Chair, can I wrap up on one point quickly?
Please do.
First, I want to thank you, Commissioner Sabir, for being present with us, given everything that you're going through with your family and the wonderful blessing that you received, and for all of your work, even outside of your commissioner role. Like, you were one of the fiercest advocates for our community on the syrup pool, right? And we appreciate you, and I appreciate all you guys have done. And I, I am enthusiastically supportive of every budget increase that you ask for. The only thing that I really need to see, along with those requests, is a vision for equitable voting in our city that's geographically based, right? As long as I have the honor of sitting in this seat, I can't abide by election after election after election with the third district not getting the access that they deserve, right? And so, if we're making requests for additional funding, I need to know, within the neighborhoods that I represent, what's your vision for people being able to vote in, in a variety of different ways, and be able to participate in our democratic process? So, those are the things that I'm going to want to see, right, as we, as we move forward, and I thank you.
Councilwoman, if I can, is there a rec center that you could suggest to us, or you would prefer?
I mean, I'd like some time to think about that. I mean, certainly, I thought, when we had the satellite election site at LOC, I thought that worked well for a variety of our communities, and if we were going to do something there, I probably would want something in Southwest, too, if we had the ability. I just want folks to be able to get to somewhere to have access from where they live in our district. But I'd love to be able to give you a more thoughtful answer to that question.
We'll work, we'll work on that list that you requested.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Gaudier. One thing about Member Gaudier, she's going to fight to get equitable distribution in our district. When we did the announcement of drop box at Shepherd, what, it's a year or so ago, she was kicking me at the press conference talking about, "Where's hers? Where's hers?" So, please, take care of Member Gaudier. And it has nothing to do with the fact that two of the three commissioners live in the fourth district, nothing to do with that. So, with that, Member Dom, are you prepared to ask your questions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Jones, thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Dealey, thank you for all you're doing for us and your team, and Commissioner Sabir, congratulations, and thank you, too, and welcome, Commissioner Bluestein. So, I just have a basic question. I listened to the testimony, can you just crystallize for me your request and the amount the administration has put on the table?
Yeah, so, we requested $27,113,786, and the administration has proposed for us $22,825,922, which is a difference of $4,287,864.
And have they provided a reason why?
No.
Okay, and have they provided an alternative on how you can fund what's needed in order to run your department?
No.
Okay. I'm supportive of your request, I just want to put it on the record, and I appreciate all you guys are doing, and I want to join in with my colleagues in that support. So, just want to put that on the record, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much. Let's see if we can make sure you get the money you need to make sure these elections are done properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Member Dom. Member Thomas, are you there?
I'm here, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm here. Good, good, something, we're afternoon now, so good afternoon, everybody. First of all, congratulations, Commissioner Sabir, on the birth of your child. Again, I know it enjoyed it, that comes with, I've seen some of your great pictures. Commissioner Dealey, your entire teams, Seth as well, Commissioner Seth, your entire teams, thank you, we appreciate you, and as I say always, you guys save democracy, and today is no different. 2020 was just yesterday to me, because I'm like Commissioner Sabir, pandemic elected official, and that's all we know so far, since we've been in. So, with that being said, the $27 million that you're asking for, that does not include anything around language access, and it does not also include anything around the drop box issues that Councilmember Gaudier talked about, is that correct?
It is, it is correct. It does not include any additional money for drop boxes, but we did request additional money to print pink sheets in Chinese, and we requested additional money for the procurement department to advertise in Chinese.
Thank you, Commissioner Dealey, we appreciate your leadership on that. I know we all did a hearing together to listen to some of the outcry that the community had around language access, and it's good to see that you are at least trying to move us in that direction, and of course, you know you have my support. How much more, the 27 million is the number you're asking for, how much more money would you need outside of the 27 million to operate the type of safe and secure election that you, that you know we need, as well as some of the issues that we've heard the advocates add for? The last time we were in this same situation, I'm pretty sure you asked us for 36 million, and that was to do everything that we know we needed to do to have a safe and secure election, that will give everybody access to voting box, and language access issues, and vote by mail situations. Is that number still 36 million to, to be able to accomplish everything we want to accomplish?
I believe that 36 million is probably a fair number. You know, one of the things that I, I would like to see, and then I, you know, is in addition to the, the equitable distribution of drop boxes, I really would like to see us be able to offer satellite offices throughout the city of Philadelphia. They were wildly popular, they provided a, a great opportunity for our voters to vote by mail in person, and they were used pretty extensively throughout the city. And, and I would just like the opportunity to have them all the time. I believe that, you know, 2020 showed us that our voters in Philadelphia are very resilient, and they really did embrace the mail-in voting option, but they liked the ability to, to do it in person with, with somebody there. So, I, I would really like to see the satellite offices, and a lot of them, we talk about that 36 million dollar figure, you know, a lot of those costs are one-time costs. Not all of these costs would be in our budget, a lot of those costs would be in OIT's budget, or DPP's budget, or procurement's budget. So, you know, our budget has an effect on a lot of other departments' budgets, just the, what we do on election night, for example, when we collect the media and the, and the paper ballots, we get, we get a big buy-in from other departments. We have OEM helps us, the Police Department helps us, the Streets Department helps us. You know, our, the work that we do really does have a huge effect on other departments. And, you know, and we are so grateful to have all the, all those partnerships, and to have all that help that we desperately need. But, you know, when we're talking about expanding services to the, to the level that we want them to be, and we want them to be for every election, not just for a presidential election, because we want people...
What is the difference?
When we, when people go to vote at AB Day School, or use a satellite office at LOC for one election, and they go back for the next election, and that door is closed, and that option is not open to them, that affects them. Some, some of those people might not find another way to vote, they could not, they might decide not to vote that day. So, we want to make sure that we can provide services equitably throughout the city, but on a consistent basis, to provide for, you know, voter integrity throughout the city of Philadelphia.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note for the record that while I do understand and recognize why the commissioners as a team are asking for 27 million, because the administration only proposed 22 million, for those who don't know, that's just how negotiations work. I just want to be on the record for supporting the Commissioners' office for 36 million dollars. I think that it's important that we put ourselves in a position to be able to take care of these problems before they present themselves. Had we not received some of the outside funding and support that we got in 2020, who knows where democracy would be right now? And, and I don't take that lightly. While we have a surplus of money, I believe we do have a number, a number of systematic problems, and throughout the course of this budget process, we've been discussing some, and we will discuss more as we go on, but I see a window here to, to fix a systematic issue as it relates to our elections and how our elections work. And I think with the surplus of money that we have, both on a city and state level, I see an opportunity to fix this problem now. So, with that being said, again, I just want to support the idea of giving the Commissioners 36 million dollars one time, being able to go back to an annual operating budget that, that goes from 22 to 27 million, and again, secure a safe election for the city of Philadelphia for this year, next year, and years to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you, and of course, to our commissioners, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Member Thomas, and our state partners have a rainy day fund surplus of $10 billion, would it be? Seems like we could get a little more help in Philadelphia. Chair recognizes Gilmore Richardson?
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to come before the body and for the record regarding the City Commissioners' testimony and a request for additional support. Chairwoman Dealey, you have just been extraordinary, extraordinary over the last several years, and Commissioner Sabir, and also our new Commissioner, Bluestein, of whom I worked with when we were both staffers in city government, I congratulate you, and saying to you, Commissioner Sabir, on the birth of your baby at Pennsylvania Hospital, which is where I used to work as the unit secretary. So, kudos and congratulations to each of you. I wanted to come on the record to state that I am supportive of the proposed allocation increase for your department, and I wanted to ask a very, very quick question of you We've noted over, obviously, the last couple of years that we have a mail-in ballots, and can you just talk about the mail-in ballots requests over the last couple of years, and how they're trending for a primary versus a general election, and how you all are preparing for this fall, which you talked about in your testimony, Madam Chairwoman? And lastly, your positions that are allocated in your department, and how many vacancies you currently have?
Commissioner Bluestein?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you.
Commissioner, can you state your name for the record, please?
Sure, Commissioner Seth Bluestein. So, in regards to vote-by-mail ballots, in 2020, approximately half of the city's voters voted by mail. In the 2020 primary, that was approximately 175,000 votes by mail, and in the 2020 general, that was approximately 375,000 votes by mail. What we saw in 2021 was not just lower turnout overall, but a smaller percentage of voters voting by mail, as more voters returned to voting in person. So, that was somewhere between 25 and 35 percent, rather than 50 percent. The 2022 primary seems to be in the same trend as what occurred in 2021, but as we approach the November general election, we're expecting a much higher turnout with a competitive Senate and gubernatorial race, so it is possible that those numbers will go up again for November.
Okay, okay, understandable. Thank you for that information. I also wanted to ask our Madam Chairwoman about all of your positions, and how many vacancies you all currently have?
Right now, we have 40, 47 data entry positions, and I think eight, eight more machine techs, we're looking to hire 76 more people in total.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Madam Chairwoman.
We're looking to hire 76 more people in total.
Okay, okay.
Some of those will fill existing vacancies, and some of those are new positions.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you so much for that response, and thank you for all of your work. I am supportive of your efforts, and will work very hard together to get you to where you need to be in this process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member. One quick question, and there's probably a logical answer for it. Under equitable distribution, and, and both of my commissioners are in the fourth district, so I love them both, but why is there a difference in my calculations of their budgets when there is the issue of seniority for Commissioner Sabir?
So, the, the individual commissioner budgets, I don't really have them, I don't have them in front of me right now, but I would, as I stated in my testimony, Deputy Commissioner Michelle Montalvo serves as our department's language access coordinator, and she provides an invaluable service to our department, and Commissioner Bluestein has retained her on his staff.
So, okay, all right, because on its surface, I, I would be concerned about, I support your budget, but I also, you know, know that we, we need to be equitable in our distribution of resources, and let's figure that, that small minute thing out as we move forward, if we, if we could consider that. You don't have to answer now, Commissioner.
No, I'm sorry, okay, we'll look at that.
All right, appreciate you. Are there any other questions for the city commissioners? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony and your patience.
Thank you.